Mic check, one, two. Check, one, two. Mic check, one, two.
We're going to call this meeting to order at nine oh one. This is our board workshop. So this will bring us to the first item. Actually, I'll kick it off to you, Ms. Ayvedra, to launch it.
Well, good morning, everyone. President Irabali, trustees. We're here for one of the last two work budget workshops before we present a budget for your consideration in late June. This eve or this morning, actually, we're going to be sharing with you some information and how we're working with the Budget Review Committee. So we'll have members of the Budget Review Committee who'll share some information with you about the budget development process and their involvement in that. We're going to spend some time this morning talking to you about where we are with our healthcare benefits and the strategies that we're going to use to keep our healthcare premiums consistent and fairly low for our employees. And then we're going to give you an update on where we are with the development of our budget and kind of a forecast for the next couple of years with our current situation and then what we anticipate in the next two years. So I'll hand it over to our CFO, Martha Aguirre, to kick it off for us.
Good morning, President Irabali, Ms. Ayvedra, Board Trustees. I am Martha Aguirre, and I'm the Chief Financial Officer. And as Ms. Ayvedra mentioned, this morning, we'll be presenting the second to the last budget workshop prior to the official adoption of our budget. But before we get going into the nuts and bolts of our compensation and budget, I did want to take this opportunity to have members of our Budget Review Committee present to you their presentation they've developed based on the recommendations they made through that process and their lens of the experience as they went through the six sessions of Budget Review Committee meetings. Today, for our presentation, we do have Dr. Davet Alonso, Coordinator with the Assessment Team. Ms. Vanessa Amos is a Student Activity Manager from Austin High School. And Mr. Justin Yepes is a Campus Teaching Coach at Barron Elementary. And so I will turn it over to them.
Thank you. Good morning, President Irabali and Board Members and Ms. Ayvedra. Thank you for the opportunity to express our learning with you. We do have a couple of brief slides and some interaction that we'd like to share with you. So a little bit about the Budget Review Committee. It was open to many employees to participate. One hundred and thirty-six were invited and forty-four percent participated, so we had seventy-six participants. Those committee members were inclusive of individuals such as ourselves, who were non-instructional, did support student instruction but not directly. And our goal for the committee was to work collaboratively, to look at our, have a clear understanding and look at our budget and identify savings, efficiencies, and other opportunities. Now, our roles did allow us an opportunity to engage and attend these meetings to have discussion. I am currently with the Strategic Planning, Assessment, and Analytics Department. I am an assessment coordinator, and my colleagues, I'm allowing to introduce themselves before we go further into the presentation.
Good morning, Board President Irabali, Board Members, and Ms. Ayvedra. My name is Vanessa Amos. I'm a Student Activities Manager over at Austin High School.
Good morning, Board President Irabali, Board Members, and Ms. Ayvedra. I am Justin Yepes, the Campus Teaching Coach at Barron.
Thank you. So a little bit about our roles and responsibility. We did have, as I mentioned, some interactive activities for the Budget Review Committee members. And having served as a campus administrator in a previous district, this was amazing to have a hands-on opportunity to really explore a district. The transparency, the alignment, and we'll talk more about that as we go into our presentation, was elite. I do have to commend our Ms. Aguirre and her team. All of her members were always present at every meeting. Everybody was right by our side to help guide us, redirect us, coach us. If we were lost in one of the activities, they helped find us. Today's agenda, we will look at the revenue generation ideas, and we'll also look at some cost-saving ideas, and we'll walk you through that.
All right. So the very first thing we did notice that was shared with us was the budget breakdown for each dollar. This was something that really resonated with the committee as we often see that, we don't often see how money is distributed. So being able to get that visual and understand how money is being distributed, and it's not just going directly to central administration or campus, and it is being put into instruction, was something that really resonated with the entire board.
Something that we also learned was about the fund balance and the cost savings that we have. So of course, we learned that we have 1.5 million spent daily in operations, and at the end of fiscal year '23, EPISD had about eighty-eight days of unrestricted fund balance, which is, of course, being used as determined by the Board of Trustees. I think what was super interesting and what resonated with me and our committee was that this is something that should be, I guess, more apparent. This was something I didn't know when we, when I started the BRC. So this would be something great. As we know, in the news, there are things happening with our neighboring district, and so it'd be great to know why we keep so much in our fund balance instead of, you know, using it for teacher raises or anything else like that. It would be great to know, you know, we need this money because, you know, as we can see, if it's utilized, this might be something that happens. So that was something that was super interesting and super apparent when we started the BRC. And we know our district adopted a balanced budget in 2024, so we explored that a little more detailed as a Budget Review Committee. And we did this through thought exchange. And over on the next slide, we had two opportunities to have a thought exchange. And if you've never participated in a thought exchange, what it is is an opportunity to have a question posed, have reflection, and then you respond as a participant. So for example, if I were to ask a question, does our matching outfit make a difference in our presentation? Your thought exchange could possibly be yes, no, and then you would give more detail of why that would or would not be feasible. So in our thoughts here, you can see on this first question, we talked just to kind of warm up about the culture. So we did have an opportunity to share what our culture was in the district. Now, keep in mind that our roles are in departments, we're in campuses, we are in different areas that support student instruction. So this gave a global lens for us to really reflect on what is our culture like. So that was a warm-up. On the next slide, we were looking in January 2023, and we asked some more detailed questions. Below, you'll see the word clouds. The first question talks about opportunities for student attendance and enrollment. And the words that are in larger Boulder print is what came up more frequently. We did talk about this as cost-saving. We also did talk about, and it may be a slide back before us or maybe on the next slide, also about cost savings and capital outlay, supplies and material. We looked at also cost savings in expensive and campus programs and also in payroll costs. And just to highlight a little bit of information, we did talk about textbooks, workbooks, and some of the thoughts that came up were about obsolete textbooks and why, you know, how are we approaching that or how are we supporting instruction and maybe looking at technology as an opportunity and not so much textbooks? We also did talk about computer labs, and Justin will go more into detail about that. Supplies and utilities, we did talk about solar panels, and ironically, one of our last speakers that we had did discuss that in depth. On the second question, on expenses and campus programs, we talked about virtual trading. So opportunity came up in 2020 when we went to COVID, and some of that has sustained, and that's been cost-saving for us. So that was a reflection point that we had. Professional development also was something that came up during that second question, as well as consolidation of some buildings and empty buildings closing. And that's a lot of the conversation going out in the district, destination district conversations. Yesterday, we were visiting one and opportunity to kind of connect with, you know, where is our funds going? How are we spending this? So these questions brought a lot to light for us, and we are going to highlight our cost savings for you next.
So as you can see, these are the top ten cost savings. The ones that have a star on them are things that were identified, not just this year's Budget Review Committee, but last year's as well. As you can see, furniture, textbooks, utilities, graduation, consulting, and computer labs are things that continue to come up. So it seems like we have identified over the last two years, what are areas that we can save funds? One of the things we keep coming back to is now what do we do with it? The top three that were found for this year were textbooks, utilities, and furniture. Textbooks, one thing that was explained to us was how we're looking at, instead of buying a textbook for every student, perhaps even just doing class sets so that we can save on the, on how much we're spending on textbooks. For utilities, we were allowed, we were given information by Mr. Ortiz as to how they're updating campuses with HVACs, putting chillers in, and different ways that they're kind of helping with the utilities. One thing that we identified we can do as being in the campus is making sure we're not taking in those appliances, not plugging in fridges and different things like that so that we can also put in our part to help out the district. And then furniture, one thing that was also brought up was maybe standardizing furniture so that we don't have different furniture throughout all campuses. Some of the top ten revenue ideas that were identified are on the board. The ones that have stars, again, were things that were identified this year as well as last year. Next slide. The top three revenue ideas, we ended up putting five just because the top three were all having to deal with attendance. Ms. Batson did share with us the steps that they're taking to make sure that our attendance is being verified correctly. We do have a lot of unverified attendance, and they're going through that and steps that they're looking at doing for next year so that we are making sure that we are doing our attendance accurately. Campus renovations, like I said, Mr. Ortiz was great in sharing and presenting to us what is being done to renovate our campuses. And community engagement, just, our district has a lot, and I don't think we, we all kind of shared that. We don't show it off enough. And just presenting that, showing off what our district has and putting it out there so that everyone knows that we are the district to be at. One thing that really did come up with technology was the transfer or the transition from MacBooks to Chromebooks. One thing we did identify was that the cost was about one-third of the cost for, to go from a MacBook to a Chromebook. One thing at the campus that we did notice is that the MacBooks performed a lot better when it came to testing. We did have a lot of issues with MacBooks, but we were, we had zero issues when it came to the Chromebooks. So it was something that really, really did help us out when it came to star testing. As we mentioned, the labs are becoming obsolete. A lot of the labs, the computers are at the end of their software, so it's something that maybe since we are one-on-one, we utilize that space better, utilize that money better. And someone did bring up they may want four or five desktops, but that's something we could look at as a campus base as opposed to renewing entire computer labs.
Point of clarification real quick. So I just want to make sure that we understand correctly. So were you sharing that in the testing environment, the Chromebooks were more reliable than the MacBooks? Is that what you were trying, because I just want to make sure that I understood that correctly?
Yes, ma'am. The Chromebooks were a lot more reliable than the MacBooks, to the point where we would even have to try and take out a MacBook and give a student a Chromebook. So yes, they were more reliable.
Thank you. So we also incorporated, we were actually participating in SEL activities. Now, many of our students are engaged in these activities. I'd like to say everyone, but hopefully one day everyone will. But to really begin our sessions that way, I know for myself, it allowed me the opportunity to leave behind assessment on a busy day. I know that I was engaged there for BRC. I was there to learn and have meaningful conversations. And I think this was really powerful. This is not something I believe that BRC had done before. So to initiate something that our campuses do is really powerful. And I want to credit Jill Voico because she had amazing things for us to do every time. They were very different. They were hands-on, and they were always linked to what our learning was for the day. One of the other important links that we made on the next slide is our strategic blueprint. And that is a nice version of what's beautifully behind us during our meetings. We have that on our PDC. It's all tied to Ms. Ayvedra's plan here. And I say her plan because we are the worker bees that are building this right now. And we see a lot of the movement going on, but I will tell you with confidence that any speaker that came in, Ms. Ayvedra included, always linked it and aligned it to the strategic blueprint, the key target. Ms. Batson, when she was just there recently, she did the same as Mr. Ortiz. Everyone always aligned every single conversation to the strategic blueprint, to their specific key target. This is a special project to me. The online version was created by yours truly. So I find it so valuable that we're utilizing this as a district. It's not only transparent to our stakeholders within, but also with outside of our four walls. So I found it very valuable that everybody that discussed anything had alignment to the strategic blueprint. And we're going to close out with our learning, our opportunities, and next steps.
So although I'm semi-removed from the classroom, I'm always going to be a teacher at heart. And so something that I brought up when we were doing this presentation was the next steps, right? Something that was super apparent during the BRC was that we were still coming up with the same ideas that the last year's cohort did. And so I started getting concerned, was the next year's cohort going to come up with the same ideas that the last two cohorts did? Is this going to be a hamster wheel that we keep spinning and spinning and spinning, and we keep spitting out the same ideas, but it's still an issue every year? So although we did learn the whats of the BRC, we still are stuck with the now what. And so something that I thought would be super beneficial, and of course, we can't do it this year because we are done with our, with our cohort this year, but maybe next year's, is taking it back to the campus. And maybe during faculty meetings or something, the BRC committee has to explain to their campus or their committees or whatever department they're in, hey, this is what I'm learning in the BRC. This is where the money is going. This is what we're doing. Not necessarily to gain ideas. So like, for example, I would go back to Austin during a faculty meeting. I'd be explaining what the BRC did that, that month, right? And not necessarily to gain information from my faculty, but just to kind of give them, hey, this is what we're doing. This is where the district is headed. Because if we are headed towards a bond, EPISD employees are either going to be your biggest benefit or your biggest hindrance when it comes to the bond. And so if faculty does not know, or EPISD employees do not know exactly what is happening with the BRC, what we're doing with the money, or what we're trying to do, especially when it came to attendance, right? One percent equals $3 million. I think that's something that maybe even parents don't know. And so if we're able to get a little bit more transparency, a little bit more openness with the community, faculty members, employees as to what the BRC is doing, what the numbers mean, I think that would be super beneficial. And then tasking you all as Board Trustees, you know, to do something with us as well with the BRC. You know, it was great to hear from employees when it came to attendance and maintenance and things like that, but it would be great to also hear from Board Members as well. I know Ms. Ayvedra always came in to speak to us as well. And then, of course, when it comes to vouchers, you know, Ms. Ayvedra has been very open and honest with us about the procedure when it came to vouchers and where we are in the legislature. So that was always great to hear as well. So that's our task to you, the now what.
So we thank you for the opportunity to present to you this morning. We hope that we provided you with useful information to reflect upon. Thank you to Ms. Aguirre and your team for bringing us together, seventy-six members strong, and we do hope that we get the one hundred and seventy-three for next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all so much. We applaud you. I also want to note that these three fine people volunteered. So when we posed to the group that we wanted them to present to the board, we asked for volunteers, and so they stepped up. So we really thank them for their leadership. It is our goal as a district to be more transparent, to be more open, and to get more employees involved. So they've really been able to provide us some good perspective, and I'm glad that it was a good learning experience for them. As we continue to move forward, we use the information that we generate from these meetings as part of the budget development process. And so it doesn't go unused, the information. So the now what, we're right in the big middle of it in terms of developing our budget, providing opportunities for you all, and sharing the work that we've done thus far based on the information that we received from the BRC and also from the Teacher Advisory Council. Next month, when we do our budget workshop, our teachers will be here to share some information about their insights and their learning associated with our budget, how we prioritize our spending, and the things that we're doing to continue to remain financially healthy.
Thank you, Ms. Ayvedra. And I will share that one of the recommendations that was provided last year, in addition to the attendance, because I think that was a very focal and important aspect of, factor that can hurt us or, or help us in the future, was a discussion. But convocation was a big ask of, let's, that's an efficiency if we do away with that, which then in the summer created or converted into what we call our community fiestas. And so that was one of those opportunities that we, we heard them and we brought it forward and made it a change to the way we work there.
I would also share that last month, you all approved textbooks for the new science adoption, and we did make some adjustments to the contract that you eventually approved for our secondary courses for middle school and above. We reduced the contract to class sets for textbooks because of the one-to-one that we have with technology. We did not do that at the elementary level. At the elementary level, we feel like the kids still need to interact with their, with their hard copy textbooks, but we did find some cost savings in that contract that we brought to you. So we do continue to take action with the information that we're receiving so that we can be more efficient with our operations as a school district.
So before we move on, do any of the trustees have comments or questions on BRC? You think Trustee Hernandez does?
I have one specifically related to the revenue idea regarding community engagement. A thought, I guess, and a question. What I'd like to see is maybe a breakdown of what the anticipated revenue could be for something like this. And I guess the question, question would be whether there's been an analysis with some of our public entities on how our facilities could maybe serve as what's missing in the community. Has, has that work been done, or can we expand a little bit just on that one piece?
Well, it's my understanding based on what I heard from the, from the group here that really the community engagement is about continuing to market our school district and make sure that people know that, you know, there are wonderful things happening in El Paso ISD. Obviously, there's always opportunities for growth and improvement, but marketing and really promoting our school district to draw more enrollment is, is, I think, what the, what the, what the strategy was there. In response to your question about surplus properties, yes, we continue to work in conjunction with, with the city. I know that Mr. Pearson meets with the city on a regular basis. I know that we're going to be scheduling meetings with the county and just working so that as we offload some of our properties, that we're also ensuring that we're honoring community and we're working with any entity that's, that's, you know, interested in purchasing, that it's for the good of the community. I think that we've shown, especially with the last sale of Bonham, that we worked in conjunction with the city and the El Paso water. And, and what's ultimately, that building will become, will be a service to the community, both for, you know, flooding purposes and then, or flooding prevention, and then for safety and security with the command center. So those are the types of things that we really want to continue to do moving forward. I don't believe that, that depth of discussion occurred with the BRC, but certainly opportunities for us to continue to dig in into those.
And I guess just the very last question, just specifically related to that, is whether there's an opportunity to generate revenue with facilities that will continue to stay within our footprint. I think it would be nice to see if that maybe would exist.
Trustee Hernandez?
I just wanted to commend the BRC Committee. That was, the whole purpose was for you all to be exposed to, and I apologize for putting my back too, but I'm finding it difficult to even communicate. But what I'm wanting to say is that the whole purpose of that was to make sure that you all are involved in this process because it's all of us. And we all have to dig down deep and figure out a way to make this district the best district that we want it to be. But we, as you all know, we have constraints, but we're here to make it all work for the benefit of all that are needing these monies. And I just wanted to bring up that I like the idea of getting the BRC involved with us in this process because I'd probably learn more from them being so detailed as we get just an overall picture. And we're just in the same boat as you all are out there trying to figure out ways to make it work. And so with that in mind, I would like to be, make it noted that we would like to be involved in that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Hernandez. Go ahead, Dr. Alom.
I just wanted a second that I completely agree. Trustees being involved in the BRC is an excellent idea. Quick question regarding MacBooks versus Chromebooks, just to get a sense of the accounting on that. Does that include licensing, lifetime of the Chromebooks versus the MacBooks, any kind of software? kind of software that's necessary, security, all of that? So, is there a breakdown that eventually we can investigate on that?
We could certainly put that question on the pending list for you, Dr. Leveridge, and share some more specific information about our shift from the MacBook to the Chromebook. And I know that, again, although the lifetime, I think of the MacBook is a little longer than the Chromebook, there's several efficiencies associated with the Chromebook that we're not currently able to manage with the MacBook. And so, but we can certainly provide you. I know that Mr. Verdusco and the Technology Department, prior to the shift, really provided a breakdown for the board, so we can send that back out as a reminder to the board, but specifically give you that information, so that you are kind of in the know about what the particulars and the differences are between the two.
Great, I appreciate it. Thank you. Ms. Ayvedra, I pass it to you for the healthcare program update.
Thank you. So, the next presenter for this morning's agenda is Mr. Juan Chavez. He's our Director of Employee Benefits, and Ms. Patty Cortez, our Chief Human Capital Officer.
So, good morning, Board President De Rubali, board members, Superintendent Danisa Ayvedra. Before I start, I'd like to introduce Mr. Randy McGraw. He's our healthcare consultant. So, if you could please join me on the first slide. One of the things I want to talk about is the highlights of our current benefits plan, and some of the things we've achieved. So, there's been currently no increase to payroll deductions in the planned year of 2024. District contributions to the health savings account continue to be $1,000 per year. District contribution of $511 towards our medical plan costs. On-site customer service. Three employee health clinics are open with new provider. We've introduced parental leave, emergency leave donation pool, as well as our Healthy Living Wellness Campaign, which I'll expand in a later slide. We do have financial retirement planning tools. We currently have an EAP with their UNIM, who provides our life insurance. And also, OMADA, and I'd like to expand a little bit on OMADA. We've had 302 participants, and what this does is if your covered adult or dependents are enrolled in the Cigna medical plan, or at risk for type 2 diabetes, heart disease, or living with diabetes or high blood pressure, you'll receive OMADA at no additional cost if you're accepted into the program. Go ahead, next slide. So, this is our Healthy Living Program. One of the things that I'll start by saying, for the 2223 campaign, we had 3,000 participants. And the reason why I bring that up is because, right now, for the fall semester alone, as you can see, we had 2,893 participants. So, we've already met the number, pretty much the number of participants in this program. One of the things about this program, it's not just the classes that we offer, but there's also health fairs to inform employees of not just the healthcare benefits that are available here, but others around, to give them other resources. We have vaccinations that are provided, as well as mammography events that are available for our employees. One of the things that we do, we work with our current community, especially with our military installations. We do Toys for Tots. Last year, we had four locations. This year, we had 11 locations that participated in the Toys for Tots. Some of the new classes that we currently have is the photography, pottery. We have dining, etiquette, and a book club. Instructions this fall semester have conducted a total of 146 classes, just for the fall semester, at 18 district and local locations. Now, for the 2024, we do have two additional art classes. One is at Nixon, one is at Whittaker. We also have a CPR stop-deleting class, where our employees do get certified for this, and it's available to them at no cost, other than paying for the certification. And that is actually one of our most popular classes, is always filled in. We also have a nursery class for planting, so have also been added to the lineup. And if anybody can see here, there's a QR code right there, for those of you that want to access the site. This QR code will take you directly to the site. Now, this site itself is a one-stop. We try to make it a one-stop, where you can also see your benefits information, as well as see some of the participants who have participated, mostly on their pictures. And the picture that is added here is one of our participants, and one of our hikes that were available. So, next slide, please. So, these are some of the testimonials that we've had. I'll let everybody here read those. I wanted to include our hiking class up there, and as well as our cooking class. Our cooking class is a very popular class. It always gets filled up. We always have a little bit of competition as to who can sign up for those. But, our big theme for us is, coming back from the pandemic, there was a lot of isolation. So, a lot of what we want to do is make sure that everybody starts socializing, expands a little bit more than what they used to do, and get a little bit more comfortable, especially dealing with mental health issues, which a lot of what we want to do is resolve that, or at least alleviate that, if that's the better term, regarding coming off the pandemic.
I would also add just that it's important for us to develop a culture for our employees, where they do want to come, they feel a sense of fellowship when they're at work. We've been doing work with the Holesworth Foundation, and over the course of the first year, we've developed our leadership definition. We sent the leadership definition out to the board and asked for feedback, but one of the competencies that we want to continue to develop in our leaders is the importance of nurturing wellness, because we know that when we understand the importance of self-care, then we can give our best to those who we serve. So, it's a critical and important piece in our culture building, and leadership competencies as we move forward, and really work towards delivering on the promise of a brighter future for our students and our families. Self-care is critical and important, and we prioritize that as an organization.
Next slide. So, this right here talks about some of the options available within our healthcare plan. Recently, as in last year, we went through an RFP. Cigna was the one that was awarded our healthcare plan. So, some of the highlights here for our healthcare plan is, visit a provider of your choice. Specialist visits do not require a referral. Doctors and healthcare facilities on the Cigna plan are, as long as they're within the Cigna plan, they're open. There's no specific network that they're directed to, as long as they're within the Cigna network. The high deductible plan, we had a lower deductible, but I mean what that is, is that with the high deductible, it went from, it was 3,000 for the deductible, and it's 6,000 for the out-of-pocket. Now, it's $3,200 for the deductible, and $3,200 for the out-of-pocket as well. And that also transfers over to our traditional plan. That one was also lowered. So, there's also out-of-network coverage, the out-of-pocket, because we'll be higher for that. And all services provide, or all plans provide behavioral health services. Our next slide is our clinics. So, currently, at no cost to employees, primary care clinics at three different locations. One is on the west side, one is in central here at this building, and one is on the east side. No-cost services are available for employees and family members that are enrolled in the district's healthcare plan. Services offered at no cost include urgent care, chronic care, physical exams, Department of Transportation physicals, because they require a physical exam for their CDL requirements in annual. Employee utilization of the clinics lowers medical costs to the healthcare plan by having a fixed cost that covers district employees. So, instead of having our employees go to urgent care or emergency room, for some of the, I guess I would say, immediate cares that they have to do, they go to the clinics. Currently, we're the only district with three clinics available to employees and qualified dependents. And as of January 1st, when we first started, there's been 1,241 of our employees that have been going to it. And that number continues to increase as we keep promoting this service to our employees. So, what I wanted to show on this particular graph, as we talked about, we haven't had an increase to the employee premiums within the last three years. And for 2024, we continue to have the same premiums for our employees. And at the moment, there's no looking at changing these at the moment. Our next slide shows our current employee distribution in regards to what employees are picking the high deductible plan, or how many employees are picking the high deductible and the traditional plan. So, our next one talks about, previous one? There you go. Thank you. So, this one here, I was talking earlier about our deductibles and our out-of-pocket costs. You see here, like I was mentioning earlier, for the high deductible plan, which is the CDHP, is $3,200. Out-of-pocket maximum will be $3,200. This one in particular, with our health savings account, when we continue providing employees with $1,000, it helps them meet those deductible costs, as well as some of their medical costs. And the traditional plan, that one, we have the flexible spending account as well to be able to use with it, but at the moment, you see our current co-pays for in-network costs and for out-of-network costs. The next slide is how do we compare with our regional districts? As you see here, I'll start with the HSA line. We're the only district that's offering $1,000 upfront to our employees. Some other districts, what they'll offer is, they will offer, for example, Socorro will offer $600, but they offer it in payments every paycheck or every month. They don't offer it all at once. And then, Sanelli is the only one that has $300 that is offered to their employees. Also, when it comes to our contributions, our monthly contributions, we are, if not the lowest, we're pretty competitive. We're pretty competitive, as opposed to Isleta, that for our standard employee contribution for our traditional plan, theirs is $217, ours is $33 per month.
I'd just like to point out that in just a bit, you're going to see what our starting salary is for our teachers, as opposed to some of the others. But, when you take into account money that's being deducted, it's really significant. $33 versus $270 is a significant take-home adjustment.
Good morning, Mr. De Rubali, board members, and Ms. Ayvedra, Patty Cortez with Human Resources. And I just wanted to just add to Mr. Chavez's presentation. First of all, to thank Mr. Chavez for really just managing this plan with not just being fiscally responsible, but also ensuring that employees are always kept top of the mind in terms of what we provide to Ms. Ayvedra's point, is to nurture wellness, and to have just that day-to-day awareness of how to take care of themselves. And there's been a lot of effort put into that. And that really ties back to, the opportunity to have a self-funded plan really requires that you're very, not only fiscally responsible, but that you constantly monitor your plan, plan to maintain sustainability through calibration, through reviewing your benefits that you offer. And as you can tell me, and I think this would be year four, that we have been able to maintain the employee contribution. So, that just speaks to the work that is put in, not just administration, but support from the board, to ensure that there's constant dialogue in reviewing benefits, identifying how we can continue to improve the plan, but also maintaining that fiscal responsibility that we are charged with. So, again, I want to thank not just Mr. Chavez, but the business services team. That collaboration is key to Ms. Ayvedra. And on this point, it really takes all of us working together to really work through what we offer to our employees.
So, as we look to ensuring that we don't impact the employees this coming school year with an increase in healthcare contributions on the employee side, through the discussions with our HR, health plan consultant, and the HR team, it's advisable that we contribute at least 10% increase to the healthcare plan. And at this point, due to the management, as Ms. Cortez was sharing, the management of the plan, and as you all are aware, we have a $5 million reserve in our fund balance that we can incorporate or support into a one-time infusion of our healthcare plan. 10% is about 4.6 million, and so, we do have a reserve of 5 million. I also want to share that we have, in evaluating every single fund, our workers' compensation fund is also in a very healthy state. And so, the proposal will come to the board for their consideration in June of transferring $1 million from the workers' comp into the healthcare fund to not deplete our reserve of fund balance completely. So, leaving 1.5 million in reserve for the healthcare fund support in future years, and then also infusing 4.6 into the healthcare to support it, and not impact our employees directly at this time.
I also want to just clarify that that is the assigned fund balance, and not the unassigned fund balance, right?
Trustee Hernandez?
First of all, thank you. I mean, I think in this day and age, to be able to say we're not increasing healthcare premiums during this budget cycle is just a tremendous win. So, it's definitely a testament to the collaboration of your team, so much applauded. My first question is whether there's some data, and this may be information that we can get later, on how much of the maternity leave, or the parental leave was utilized during this last year? I know there was some initial discussion about starting at five, but eventually trying to get to two weeks of parental leave as sort of the baseline. So, I'd love to explore that possibility, especially if it's something that, you know, is financially prudent. The second question I have, and before I ask a specific question, is related to the mental health services. Could you just give me a quick overview of what the mental health service program is under the HDHP, specifically, the high deductible plan specifically?
So, under the CDHP, our employees are, as long as it's within network, similar to the traditional plan. So, if they have a consult, for example, after they go to their primary care provider, then they will be, as long as they're within the Cigna network, they'll be covered. So, there's, when it comes to traditional or the high deductible plan, it's still included in it.
But, they'll have to, until they meet the deductible, it'll be out-of-pocket?
So, yes, but what I will add to that is this. With the Cigna plan, there is discounts that are offered. So, yes, initially, they would have to pay for the office visit, but for the office visit, they would be paying it at a discount, based on the discount that Cigna is providing to them.
Can they use HSA? If the HSA contribution is in there, they can use that as part of covering any initial costs to meet the deductible?
Yes, yes, they can.
So, I'd love a better breakdown of this. My biggest concern, and I understand the reasons for HDHP, my biggest concern is when you look at the data sets, people who are under an HDHP are actually so much less likely to utilize mental health services, and a lot more likely to utilize emergency mental health services. I think, especially as teachers grapple with inflationary costs, and where to, you know, apply money for their deductible, they're probably thinking about their children, or some sort of an emergency, or when they get sick, rather than their mental health. And I think we see that in the data. I'd like a much better sort of breakdown, maybe how many of our, and I know I've asked for this before, maybe how many of our employees are actually utilizing mental health services under the HDHP? I think whenever we're talking about teachers' mental health and wellbeing, but also mental health of their children, I think it's really important to have a good idea of exactly how much they're being impacted by being pushed to an HDHP plan. So, if we could maybe get some better data on that, and again, just maybe explore what we could do to supplement that, if indeed, we're finding that they are less likely to utilize mental health services because they're not wanting to pay out-of-pocket for that.
So, one of the things I did want to add to the mental health services that are provided in addition to the Cigna plan, is we also have an EAP, Employee Assistance Program, affiliated with UNIM, and our employees are utilizing that as well.
Thank you. And, and, and it could be that, you know, maybe there could be some supplementary programs to, I mean, because beyond that, there's also stigma with mental health, right? And so having to reach beyond just the constraints of your own insurance program to seek out mental health services, my concern is really just what are our employees doing and so that we can just kind of get a better idea of that. Thank you.
And also part of that is we do provide customer service. We have an onsite nurse who provides any one-to-one that an employee may need to have specific private conversations. We also have, like I said, the Employee Assistance Program, where they would have that confidentiality phone call if they wanted to have a one-to-one through those services. So there's a variety of education that we try to provide to ensure that employees have different avenues to reach out for those type of services.
Yeah, and that's great, but my, and I wonder if they are, if they actually are, could, is there a way to get the numbers of HDHP versus traditional for utilization of mental health? Trustee, thank you.
Trustee call.
Yeah, sorry. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right. Just, I'm wondering about the, the networks for the traditional versus the, versus the CDHP. Which network is, is better? Is that Cigna's or is, would that be the traditional?
I believe they both use the same network, the Cigna network for traditional, because we have one plan.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
Trustee Hernandez.
I want to get back to the, the reserves that you were speaking on, on Ms. Aguirre. When, compared to last year, because we're self-funded, how is it, is, how, how much, I would just like a comparison to what, how we utilized those monies last year for this year in, in regards to the reserves.
So with, within the general operating fund balance, there's two classifications, the restricted or reserved, and then unrestricted. When we have conversations here in, in, in the boardroom about our fund balance and number of days, it's all related to the unrestricted. There is no designations. But under the restricted, and, and I'll, I have a slide and I can give you a little bit of detail there, we as a district and you as a board, we, we have reserves that we have for required expenditures, construction work in progress, things of that nature. Well, we had a reserve for the healthcare fund of $5 million that we've, it's just sitting there until we made a, make a recommendation of your consideration. And so last year, it was at the same level, and, and so we're, but now it's time to consider utilizing it to support our employees and not give them the impact of increase in healthcare funds.
Thank you.
And Ms. Aguirre, just, I want to clarify, you said that we are looking at a 10% increase for healthcare services this year, and administration's recommendation to take, for, to ensure that take-home pay for our staff is maintained, is for us to use the reserve 4.6 for healthcare, which is assigned fund balance, not unassigned, and then transfer in from our overly healthy workers' comp into the health savings fund.
Healthcare.
Healthcare savings, okay.
So it would, in essence, it would be 3.6 from our general operating fund balance reserve and 1 million from our workers' comp.
Which would leave us with?
1.6.
1.6.
Okay.
Is that so we can, so we don't have to increase?
Correct.
That is so that we can cover the 10% for employees rather than the employees having to incur that at this point.
So I'm with trustee Hernandez, I'm very happy and proud that we're able to hold the line on healthcare costs for so many years. This will be year number four. As we see, I mean, if you see the last slide, the regional contribution, we're, we're much further ahead on this. So whatever it takes, I know this board has, has made a conscious effort behind this, and thank you guys, because I think it's the collaboration between the multiple departments that make this a reality. And trustee call.
Yeah, sorry. Quick question. If, if we're going to be pulling a million dollars out of our workers' fund balance, can we, sorry, workers' comp fund balance, can we get more data on, on historically, like what are, you know, what are, what are fund balances there?
Yes, I can, I, in the June workshop, I'll bring to you the details related to our workers' fund, fund balance, so that when you have the actual budget amendment before you in June, you are, have a clear understanding of where we would end up within the workers' fund.
Yeah, I just don't want to, you know, get that too low. One other question, how, talk to me a little bit about our, our wellness program, if we have one, since we're, you know, trends, we're facing a 10% increase on our healthcare costs.
So let me expand on the wellness program initially. There was SR funding that was available in order to seed money some of these programs. So that included in us, I'll give you one example. We, we started a pottery class, so we had to buy items to start a pottery class. Those items included pottery wheels, included clay, all the materials in order to need it. Once that was purchased with SR funds, then it just was funding, in this case, we have our teachers, we give miscellaneous pay to our teachers, and they're the ones that conduct the class. So that's just one example of one of the classes that we have.
I guess I'm talking more about, I mean, and that's great, you know, for enrichment, mental health-wise, all that stuff, but I think, I guess I'm talking more about like physical wellness.
Okay.
You know, a lot of, a lot of organizations out there provide some type of incentive for, you know, getting checkups regularly or going to the gym, you know, things of that nature. Think that would definitely pay for itself in the long run.
So I will also expand on that as well. On top of the pottery classes, we do have fitness classes available such as yoga, we have zumba, we have cardio tennis is another one that is available. On the website, we currently, I wouldn't say partner, but we do have gyms that work with us to offer discounts to our employees as well, and we advertise that as well.
And Mr. Chavez, could you correct me if I'm wrong, but Cigna offers additional benefits if you do certain things like checkups, or I know vaccinations, I think COVID, they were, COVID shots, vaccinations, they were giving incentives, cash or gift cards, things like that?
Yes, Mr. Dubaly. So for example, if our employees take the, the flu shot, for example, there's a hundred dollar gift card available through Cigna Rewards, that's just one of them, also for annual checkups as well. I believe we're up to $500 worth of incentives that is offered to our employees annually in order for them to, for example, just to get a mammogram, to get a colonoscopy or preventive care, which is what we're pushing quite a bit is preventive care. And then I will mention the OMADA program. The OMADA program does help us quite a bit, especially with prediabetic, diabetic individuals that are participating in it. What it does offer, it offers a no-cost blood monitor as well as a scale. So while they're in the program, they do have an individual that is assigned to them and does offer them counseling and advice and getting through their process and dealing with either their current situation, they're dealing with diabetes or prediabetic or high blood pressure.
Trustee Quay.
Is there a form of, like, if you say that you're going to stay away from tobacco, not use tobacco, chewing tobacco, smoking it, something like that, like a discounted rate through Cigna? I know the County of El Paso has something like that, I was just curious if.
Like a tobacco cessation?
Yes.
Yes, I can, I can look into that.
And do we, speaking of tobacco, I know, like with my healthcare plan, there's a tobacco rate and a non-tobacco rate, which is essentially the same thing, it's an incentive to, to, to quit. We've, we've never done a tobacco rate versus a non-tobacco rate in the past, correct?
We have not.
Okay. All right.
The last thing I'd like to ask, to go back to trustee Call's fund balance for workers' compensation, if not, if we can just see the, the trends in that account, but also the claims that are coming out of it, knowing what, you know, we've had a couple items for that. So if we can look at a three-year look, going back of what kind of claims are coming out, what those costs look like, and then any projections of what we anticipate coming out of the workers' compensation fund for the next, let's do three on the back and then three on the future, please. Ms. Aguirre.
Okay. As we move on to the next section of our presentation.
Did you have a question? No, I'm sorry. It wasn't a question, it was just a comment. Because I can compare from what I came from, from the county to what you all are doing here, I want to congratulate you all for, for implementing the new programs as you have, because I know it is worth our, our data and making sure that everyone is healthy. And if I can make a comparison, this is excellent. I think if anything, everybody needs to be part of this program in one way or another because it's beneficial to everybody.
So as we, we move in to the budget development update, the first section of our presentation will be an overview of the process that we've, the processes that we've done to ensure our compensation, evaluate our compensation tables and, and everything else that's associated with employee salaries, and Ms. Cortez will provide us that overview.
Thank you, Ms. Aguirre. So as mentioned here, our assistance review, this is something that we do annually. It may not be every year that we can address every rate or, or every pay grade, but we, we do a review to ensure that we're, we're maintaining alignment and that we can have at least a plan moving forward. And that starts from not just our pay, our pay grades, our pay tables, but also our extra performance pay, our miscellaneous pay rates, substitute rates, and our, our different pay groups. And as we go to the next slide, and we start with our extra performance pay and instructional stipends, I want to again just take you back to the collaboration that it really takes to review and assess the needs of the district, the needs of our students, and identify how we're supporting our teachers in the classroom. And so this took a lot of work, I want to thank all of our senior leaders that participated in this process, because it's not just the four of us here or three of us now, you know, going back and looking at these numbers, it really takes the entire team to assess and ensure that we're continuously meeting, meeting the needs. And so we did have input from several cabinet and senior team members in assessing any type of recommendations for our stipend schedule. And so we will have some of our team members come up and, and discuss based on any questions you might have on the stipends. And so we'll start with the athletic trainers, and we do have Mr. Servantes here, and the recommendation was, was made to increase the stipend. It had been some time since there had been a movement to that stipend. Now, there is a difference in the athletic trainer, that maybe we can say it's not consistent, it's not a consistent role with other districts, so we keep that in mind when we do the comparables to other districts. In our district, they do not teach, but, but obviously the job does entail for them to be available several hours of the day and weekends, and that's the, the basis for the assessment and recommendation to increase the stipend. Our wellness team leader, that is a recommendation, again, I believe, through Mr. Servantes here, and, and Mr. John Adams, and this is a wellness team leader stipend that provides that for the individual that takes on the lead for the wellness program.
So just, that is something that we're just formalizing in terms of a stipend, but we've traditionally paid that through extra duty pay or things of that nature, so we're just moving it over to an official stipend going forward.
That's correct.
And your next section, department heads, that's just clarifying the language, no, no change to the dollar amount. And I'll be referencing anything that you see in red, which would indicate there's a, a recommendation to make a change. And in addition, anything in, in purple is a new.
Well, if you go, if you go back one slide, I did want to share that in, in the past, we, we have not provided a stipend for elementary grade-level leaders, and so we're introducing that for the next.
For the pre-k.
They work with their grade-level leader teachers during PLC. They make sure that they're planning, you know, the PLC conversation, making sure that there's a collaborative culture amongst the grade level to plan lessons going forward. They review data together, and so you have a point person for the grade level that really brings the group together to have those conversations about instruction. Sorry, Dr. Leverage, PLC is a professional learning community, and that's really when we bring our teachers together to collaborate about instruction, look at data, plan lessons, work through resources, things of that nature.
Moving on to the next page, we have the gifted and talented section, and that is a new stipend being recommended for one coordinator per campus.
And I'll just give you all a little bit of information about that. We have found that, you know, coming out of the pandemic, our gifted and talented program may have suffered somewhat, or we've drifted away from the principles of addressing really our gifted and talented children. So we've got our academic team really focused on reviving that program, rebuilding it, strengthening it, and so for us to really have a dedicated personnel at each one of the campuses to coordinate the services that we're introducing, that's why that's, that stipend is, is being introduced to support that programming lift.
Your next section under special education is, is essentially a consolidation of the language, and so you have self-contained, which will take the place, and that's at $2,000.
Special ed self-contained, I want to, you know, clarify that, because we also have just regular ed self-contained elementary classes, but this refers to special education self-contained classes.
And your next section for this special ed mentor, again consolidating the three areas, and the stipend amount would be the same for, for the three categories?
I would like to add, you'll notice that under the self-contained section, there is one stipend that is reflected at 2,100. Prior to eliminating and consolidating and, and not impacting somebody's pay, the team did verify that stipend has not been issued in, in the last three years, and so that's why we are, are going to consolidate and have one standard rate.
Your next section is your high school career and technical student organization stipend for the coach, and that's $1,500.
Really quick, Ms. Cortez, we're going to jump before we get too far down the line. If trustee Hernandez can ask a question.
Yeah, really quickly, just so I can get quick clarification, on page 34, I see a strikeout of the certification eligibility must be teacher of record. Does this mean that students that are working with, I mean, teachers that are working with those students despite being teacher of record will now be eligible for the stipend? Could you clarify why that was struck, that language was struck?
I'd like to have Mr. Garcia, if he can come and speak to that item.
Good morning, President. Good morning, President Dubaly, Ms. Aguirre, members of the board. So currently, teachers of record would be a teacher who has a student on a roster through teams and is, is serving that child directly, they're responsible for grades and also the direct instruction for those students.
So I guess my question. My question is why that language has been struck? And whether they now are eligible for the stipend when they work with students, even if they're not teacher of record? So I guess that, that's my question, why it's struck out.
Ms. Diaz, would you join me at the podium?
I guess the, the question is, when would we find a situation where a teacher is not the teacher of record, is not the teacher that officially services children, but might be working with a child? What, where would we find an instance that that would be the case if that person was bilingual certified?
Yeah, and I guess my, I'm sorry, really quickly, just to clarify, my question would be, does this open the door to instructors who are working with students to be eligible for the stipend despite not being the teacher of record?
No, so this is not instructional. What we're looking at is we have diagnostic.
What we're looking at is we have, um, diagnosticians or certain evaluators that work with the students to evaluate the students in their, uh, you know, native language, in this case, Spanish. So our teachers meet the criteria in a different way. Uh, when we're looking, I'm sorry, our evaluators meet the criteria in a different way. It's either to a Texas, through a Texas teacher certification, or they are given a nationally recognized foreign language test. So this is really for evaluators that are working, uh, to assess the, the, you know, our special education students that are bilingual.
So this is not a teacher, for teachers, okay, so, okay, that, that's a good clarification. So if I'm a diagnostician and I'm bilingual certified, and I'm evaluating, uh, a child who is a Spanish speaker, then that stipend, I, I, I'm eligible for that stipend?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. And the reason why we removed ESL is because they still test them, uh, if they don't have the certification, they'll still, uh, provide that nationally recognized test. Um, so it's not really ESL, it's just a bilingual test to measure, uh, Spanish proficiency.
Uh, sorry, my question, thank you.
Thank you.
But I, I do want to, really quick, before y'all leave, I guess the concern I have here is it says that we're editing the position to non-instructional, but to me, that just replaces the instructional one. Because it's, it's, you know what I'm saying, we're not duplicating, we should have two. We should have one that says bilingual or ESL sped certified personnel instructional, and then we should have another one that says non-instructional.
We do.
But this says to me.
We, we have both. We have both, so this one's new, which is why it's coming to you.
So then it all should have been in purple.
The section right above has the instructional?
Yeah.
So I think the other one's not changing, just.
That, that's, that's my point, then, okay.
We added the non-instructional in parentheses to clarify that.
So just, so we don't get in the same situation we got in last year, we will not changing the original one, the teacher of record thing. Everything that's here will stay the same for the instructional component.
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
It's gonna be consolidated into one stipend, right?
No, what he's saying, yeah.
The statement down there is, is only relevant to that bilingual, non-instructional.
Okay.
Right, exactly. So we've got, um, a stipend avenue for teachers. And then a stipend avenue, when we say non-instructional staff, it's not that they're not certified, it's just that they're not teaching in the classroom, but they still interact with bilingual children to do their job.
So going back to that, is there, such going back to your original question, is there a situation where we do have instructors working with sped and/or ELL students that are not teacher of record and therefore wouldn't be eligible for the stipend?
Why, I, I would say that, uh, I, I think that they would be eligible for the stipend, but I'll give you a, uh, not necessarily non-instructional, but a T, so if you're an inclusion teacher, you're bilingual certified, and you're not necessarily listed as a teacher of record, but you support in the bilingual classroom, you're eligible for the stipend, right?
Could we, could I get some?
Is that correct?
So, and in June, we're, we'll be bringing the clarifying, uh, language for that stipend.
Okay.
Yes.
And just moving forward for the public presentation, let's be sure to include instructional and non-instructional in the same one, so it doesn't look like we're eliminating. It's very clear, very transparent, and just clean, please.
Got it.
Um, quick question about the, the sped mentor, um, stipend. Do we, you know, I know we're, we have had and are currently having some recruiting difficulties in this area. Do we feel like this is robust enough?
Actually, I don't believe any other district offers, uh, a mentor stipend. Uh, we offer it for all evaluators, whether they're SLPs or DAX or any type of therapist in any of the areas. We offer that mentor stipend of $1,000. Um, from what I had seen previously, and I know HR has also reviewed, I don't believe there's any other district that offers, uh, a stipend for, for mentors. Um, I don't know if you had seen anything different, Ms. Cortez.
No, that is correct.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. I'm just thinking of, of the situation from a supply and demand standpoint, like, if there's a, under supply, certainly, you know, we've gotta do something.
Well, I think this is one step in the right direction. We'll certainly evaluate. Um, but at this point, I think that, you know, being proactive and understanding that when you come into an organization new in a role, that mentorship, um, you know, really ensures your success. So offering that additional advantage is one step in the right direction. I don't think that it, um, um, to your point, it, it, it's not everything that we can do, but I think we're moving in the right direction with this one.
Where's her, for paraprofessionals?
The stipen, these stipends are not for paraprofessionals, no.
Part of the reason that that's the case is because there's, um, these are high needs, uh, positions. Um, and you, you have to go, um, and get an additional certification in terms of bilingual uh, to be able to do, you know, the things that we've just described. So I think that's where the, um, additional stipend comes into play.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the next section. And that was the, uh, high school career and technical student organization, uh, extra performance pay. And the recommendation there is to expand on the program, and so we're changing the language to, uh, pay for coaching up to two student organizations.
And that's in an effort to promote more participation and having, you know, the, 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 the support, uh, from our, our teachers.
Because, you know, as we think about our strategic blueprint and whole child development, and really providing additional opportunities for kids to excel outside of the classroom that could be co-curricular or extracurricular, that's what this stipend is really dedicated to.
Point of clarification, is it $1,500 per CTSO?
Correct.
Can we clarify that language a little bit, because it does look like it could be $1,500 for two?
Well, good.
That's a good point. The next section you see in red, and that is, that is an obsolete, uh, stipend amount, so we're gonna remove that. Same with your marketing education stipend is also obsolete.
Obsolete because we don't use and they don't exist now.
The program is no longer in place.
We, we shifted from LVN to medical assistant, is that it? Mm-hmm. And so the shift in the program, um, was, is the reason why that's stricken there.
So the program no longer exists, so that's why they're eliminating it.
It, it, it exists, but in a different form, right?
The next section, your campus redesign stipend. Now, this is to, uh, clarify, we currently have the redesign stipend for any employee that's selected to, uh, be employed at, or placed at a redesigned campus. We are, uh, clarifying the campus principal stipend due to the fact that that could also include a school improvement stipend, which may not be in full redesign, uh, mode, but still qualifies the principal for the, uh, school improvement stipend at the same amount, $10,000. And a clarification for the campus redesign stipend is, in blue, you'll see the stipend is available only, uh, during the designated three years. Next section.
The next one is, uh, for our food service team. Uh, so our cafeteria managers, uh, are maybe volunteer or are recommended to be what we call trainee, trainers of, or mentoring, uh, aspiring cafeteria managers within their teams. So this pay of $500 per semester would, would be for the extra work that they're doing related to that. Uh, we're just increasing the amount from 150 per semester to 500 per semester.
And again, on this one, it's the program's no longer available, so we, those are obsolete. And that would be your Delta Fine Arts section and your LAFA facilitator. And LAFA teacher, that's due to a grant that has ended.
Oh, that was my question.
Yeah.
I was, so with, with Delta, and I know Delta kind of gets, um, I say the word left behind. Um, I don't know if that's the appropriate term or not, right? Uh, but that's one of the schools on my feeder pattern or within, um, District Two. And I know with a lot of those students, right, these are the kids that are either awaiting trial, uh, they're in there for some other type of offense, or some other type of disciplinary, um, you know, proceeding that's pending against them. Um, and for them to have, so right now, are there any fine arts available for any of the Delta students? Or is it just whatever extracurriculars are there, not in terms of sports, but just things that they can do on, you know, while they're not, um, basically in lockdown?
If I can have Mr. Bos, he can speak to that item.
And I think if that's information's not readily available, I think a board update will work where we can get all extracurriculars offered at the Delta campus. Unless you know all of the.
And there's specifics about that one.
Okay.
So on the pending list?
So this is something that needs to go on the pending list. Liz, can you make sure that we document that so that we can follow up with Mr. Quayre, but the, the full board gets the information as well?
Yeah, I'd like to know why the grant wasn't, uh, wasn't renewed or what happened with it, I don't know if that's.
So the grant is not related to the, to, to the Delta Fine Arts stipend. The grant was related to the lesson aligned formative assessment. To the fine arts.
Yes, thank you so much, President Irvaldi, trustees, Ms. Aguirre. The Delta, um, JP Courts requested to move from a fine art elective to more of a CTE provocative elective. So we're putting those, uh, funds into a welding and construction program, per their request.
So more trade?
More trade base, yes, sir.
More types of trade that, okay, that they can use once they get out into the workforce.
Exactly, so that they have, uh, job skills and certifications when they exit the program. Hopefully, they don't come back, so to decrease recidivism.
Okay, okay. And, and, and I was just gonna make a comment, it'd be nice to have both, you know? Um, but of course, you know, funding is, is limited, but in terms of the students, you know, that are there right now, um, if you haven't been there, I would encourage you to go there if anybody hasn't been. Um, I know that with a lot of these students, you know, I say the word kiddos because they are kids, but a lot of them commit some pretty serious offenses. Um, but we still, you know, don't want to forget about them. Um, they still need to be educated, they still need to, you know, have that diversion in the sense of, of still being a child, right? So that they can remember like, hey, there's actually people out there that are trying to advocate and work for me, not against me. So, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Bos.
Yes, sir.
Just kind of a follow-up to, um, what Trustee Quayre just said. I'm wondering if the fine arts component maybe was considered to be therapeutic by the student population there? And maybe it'd be worth it just to ask them that question, because I would hate to see the therapeutic component be removed without actually knowing if it was something that they enjoyed or helped, helped.
Was this stipend in use currently?
I'm sorry?
Is the stipend in use?
No, it is not being used.
Okay.
Thank you.
And your next section, your staff development activities, uh, update on the rates for teachers preparing for workshops going from 20 to $25. And clarification on the teachers attending workshops, uh, making that specific to teacher as a classification, and also increasing from 15 to $25. And that's per hour, correct? That's correct. Okay. And then clarifying for your hourly rate for any other employee that works outside of their regular duty day, then they would receive their hourly rate. Your summer school session, intercession rates. Also just clarifying, the hourly, hourly rate is for the campus monitor or title change from playground to, uh, campus monitor. And the next section and last section is your substitute pay rates. And I'd like Mr. Albert Reyes to, uh, please come up, and he'll speak to the change in the, uh, summer assignments that are listed.
Irvaldi, board members, and Ms. Aguirre. Name's Alberto Reyes, the Human Resources Director for Support Personnel. Uh, the reason for deleting the substitute rates is because we do not use, uh, substitutes in the summer. Uh, for, an example is, uh, for teachers, we, uh, the summer coordinators hire an alternate teacher. So anytime, uh, a teacher's gonna be out during the summer, then they know to call the alternate teacher to come in and fill in for the, the teacher. So that's why we not, do not use substitutes. Okay? Another example is for nurses, um, Ms. Luna coordinates the nurses. And in some cas, campuses, she hires multiple nurses. And so one's gonna be out, the other one replaces that nurse. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. And so now moving on to our next slide is the compensation process update. As I mentioned, every year, we review all pay grades and all pay rates, and, um, ultimately, uh, provide to you some options and for consideration. Um, several factors are considered when we're looking at compensation. Obviously, always trying to move our employees forward, uh, support, uh, their longevity with the district and their career path. Uh, this is a difficult year, we know, for every district, uh, but we're, we are in a position uh, where we have some stability and, and would like to consider, uh, some options for your consideration. So this table here just identifies, uh, what the cost would be associated with a 1% of midpoint increase or 1.5% increase from midpoint. Now, I want to point out to you that again, we've done a lot of work to really try to, uh, bring our, our teacher pay scale up to a competitive rate. Uh, as you hear, we're still, uh, at the bottom of our local region list. Uh, and in consideration of a one and a, uh, one and a half, that would still put us at, uh, right above San Elizario with the one or one and a half for starting pay for teacher, for a teacher.
What we're prepared to bring to you in the next budget workshop is really a comparison with all of the, um, healthcare compensation piece, um, so that we can do that alongside. Because I, I want to make sure that we all understand that although the starting salary may be above where we are, when we look at our full compensation package, um, it, it might be a much better scenario, you know, for our teachers in comparison to some of our other school districts. So I think that that's important for us to look at side by side.
I have a question. The 1% midpoint and 1.5 midpoint of what midpoint?
Of, of the specific pay table. Um, each employee has a, uh, uh, each role.
But in these categories, is what you're saying?
No.
It would be for all, for all?
So, every position within the district has a pay scale. And the way that the district, uh, does pay increase, correct me if I'm wrong on this, is that it's X percent off of the midpoint, not X percent as a, as a whole to the salary. And so for each individual organization, or position, a 1% at the midpoint would equal that, 1.5 would equal that.
And this is where the money, the fund, the, the things that you have listed on the table there are the funds where the money would come from, right? So the first line is general operating budget. So if we went with a 1%, 5.7 million would come out of the general operating budget. If, uh, we did a 1%, 102K, um, 102 would come out of food and nutrition, and then 263K would come out of other funds, right? So that's how we would fund it to get to the $6 million.
Okay, well, I'm confused then. Why are we putting midpoint in here? I don't understand that point.
Because when we run the, the dollars, the, the costs, the projections, we use the midpoint of each pay, uh, position. So each position has a different pay grade, and they're, they're lumped into different groups.
Right.
The budget book that I provide you at the beginning, when we adopt the budget, can show you the different pay tables that are within our pay system.
Right.
So every pay, every position or pay table has a minimum, mid, and max pay range.
Within these categories, is what you're saying?
Within all the different categories in the district, uh, organization. And so, what, in order to do that calculation, we use midpoint to do the analysis of the cost.
Ms. Aguirre, so for general operating fund, that would be our teachers, um, our administration, kind of the.
Our administrative professionals, our auxiliary staff, our transportation, our police officers. Everybody, uh, would be included in that cost.
Food and nutrition would be our cafeteria staff, things of that nature?
Everybody that's in the, yeah, within the food and nutrition. The other funds is employees that are funded with grants, with different funding sources. And the reason it's broken down is because you, as the board, adopt the general fund, the food and nutrition fund, and the debt service. Well, debt service doesn't include personnel. But I am giving you the amounts by fund so that it's clear, um, how much you're, uh, committing to as you adopt a, a pay increase.
So Trustee Hernandez, this would be a 1% across the board, 1.5 across the board for every single employee, but the numbers would come from different accounts, uh, based on, I guess, accounting requirements, really, correct? Um, and so you see general operating would be the biggest one that, that, that is impacted, followed by food and nutrition and other funds. Does that answer your question? Does that answer your question?
It does, but I've just never seen it combined or consolidated yet.
If I can provide maybe some clarification, is your midpoint is considered the market value of the job? So the raise is provided at the level that provides the value of that job? And so across the board, that percentage is provided to that, the position at its market value?
I understand that part. What I'm saying is that I have never seen it in a chart together like this as you guys have developed it as such.
We usually break down the presentation by the different funding sources when we share with you the proposed pay increases.
And just kind of going off of that, you could potentially have an employee that, whose current salary is $70,000, but the midpoint is $55,000, so the pay increase would be calculated based on what value is and not necessarily what they're making.
That's correct. And the converse as well. So an employee could be a starting pay at $50,000, but the mid-range midpoint value is $60,000. So then the pay increase would be based on that midpoint 60,000 percentage.
And just for clarification, is this the way that the other districts calculate their pay increases for...
That's pretty standard.
Yes, that is.
Standard, mhm.
As we move on to the next section, more on the general operating budget. Before I get to show, we discuss the snapshot, I wanted to just share with you some information that's important for us to keep in mind. So the state does have metrics that determines or defines if a district is doing, how the district is doing financially, and their financial stability, I should say. And so one of the metrics they have is what they refer to as the administrative cost ratio. So this cost ratio is they establish based on the size of district. So mid to large size school districts are set with a standard of 8.55% when considering the administrative costs versus the instructional costs. So when I have there on the definition, function 21 and 41, what those means is costs associated with central office leadership. And the function 41 is just in general, I'm sorry, the 21 is instructional leadership at the central office, and 41 is central office leadership in whole.
Let me clarify that one more time. 21 is campus leadership?
No. Central office instructional leadership.
Okay. Not principals?
No.
Okay.
Principles are 23.
Can you give us an example?
No, I'm talking about 21.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say.
Principals are 23.
23.
Function 21 is central office instructional leadership, such as Mr. Garcia. He is considered under the function 21, our school leadership team. So they support the campuses, but they are at the central office location.
So, Mr. Garcia and Dr. G's departments essentially?
Facilitators, academics, yes.
And then 41, can you give another practical example?
41 would be our superintendent, our business office personnel, HR, more on the operational business side.
Okay.
I'm assuming all those functions are internal?
No, those are state, those are state required functions. And so if you reference to that budget book that I had shared, I'm going to take that.
Yes, yeah.
In the very back of the book, you can see it's our Bible, we raise your functions right there.
So I was gonna say maybe on, for the presentation, right, the follow-up?
Yes.
Like a hyperlink or something like that, just so that everybody can see where they're at and where you're getting those numbers from?
Sure, I can do that. And so just to remind you, when you officially adopt the budget, it will be by function, because that's the state requirement, by fund and function. So you'll have every single function defined. This test is based on just those specific functions listed. So function 11 is direct costs associated with the classroom. So put in the teacher, put in the instructional materials, anything that's in the classroom. Function 12 is associated with media, resources, and librarians. So we relate that more to the librarians and those expenses. Function 13 is what we refer to as professional development. So in that, it's all the training and instructional PD that we provide. So it could also be, let's say, a facilitator or an instructor, personnel that's in the academics that is focused on providing guidance to our teachers. So that would be a function 13. And lastly, 31, and those are counseling services. So any expense related to counseling would be coded to this. So when you take, you add up those expenses and do the ratio with the 21 and 41, that's how they measure our administrative cost ratio. And so you can see here for the data of 21, 22, because of course, we are always operating on a two, almost a two-year lag. You can see that the state, the district was at 5.96%, a state standard was 8.5. And you can see the other districts respectively. You can see that Granatillo, being a smaller district, is considered, the standard is different for them because of the district size. Again, these are all metrics that are established by the state, and they impact some of our ratings when you look at the first rating that is awarded to the district in October. As we move on to the next slide?
Trustee Hernandez, answer a question.
Sorry, I have a quick question. If you can go back to that slide, is that percentage expected to change as you all go through the redesign process?
So as we navigate through the district redesign, it will also impact our central office personnel staffing if we align our footprint, we would also align it there. I do have to share that in the last couple of years, through the audit, we have an audit annually, and so the auditors will do random payroll samples. And so at times, what they do is they'll look at the job description and compare to how we're coding their pay. And so if it's not necessarily aligned, and an example would be if a facilitator, those are 21, right? If a facilitator in academics was coded in the past to a function 13, but based on the job description, it was not necessarily aligned to that function, the auditors either question, let's evaluate the role, should we code it to a 21? Or should we redesign the job description to align to the actual role? So it's a matter of reviewing on an annual basis and then adjusting. So in some cases, we have had to revise their coding so that obviously would trigger an admin cost ratio increase, because now we're coding more people to that 21 function.
But our goal is to stay well under what the state standard is. My message to the team has been that as we move forward and continue to have conversations about Destination District redesign, any rightsizing that we do, that we would adjust central office accordingly, so.
So to be clear on that, we anticipate that 5.96 to decrease as we go through the DDR process.
As we go through the DDR process.
Okay.
So another one important aspect of that, and I know we have a lot of campus administrators here in the audience with us, is we also look to see how budget amendments are submitted. So if a campus is asking to transfer funds from a function 11 instructional, a function 12 or a 13, and move it to a function 23, which would be campus administration or another 52, whatever the other function might be, we evaluate because we need to also make sure that we adopt the administrative cost ratio as close as possible to the level we want to maintain. And so that's another consideration, because in essence, we're pulling from instruction to focus on other operations. This next slide, and I know it's, there's two charts, and I'm gonna refer to the top chart first. What you have here is your snapshot of the general operating fund. And so, you know, as we all know, it's no secret to anybody, our funding, we are experiencing significant funding challenges when we look at the state and public education. And with that in mind, we also need to be cognizant that if we want to be the Destination District, we want to ensure that we continue to progress and enhance our programs as we offer to our students, right? And so knowing the realities of our challenges, this budget has been quite heavy, not only for the team that's trying to balance the budget, but really the departments that had to evaluate and come back to the drawing board and redo some more, and redo some more, because we cannot continue to operate with the same level of funding as we have in the past. And so for that, I do, I appreciate and thank our departments that have been team players in helping us achieve a balanced budget as close as possible. So when I start here on the top section of that snapshot, you have the revenues that we're anticipating. As we've shared, our local revenues are looking at a decrease in revenue compared to last year of $39 million. And the largest reason for that change is the homestead exemption that was passed this current year of $100,000 per property value. So we do see an increase in property values, but the revenue is just not gonna come in. The state had assured that they would re-infuse those dollars through state money. And as you can see there, we do anticipate a $31 million increase, but not to the tune of the loss that we're experiencing or expecting in local.
So it was, it was not dollar for dollar?
It was not dollar for dollar. The revenue's also projecting 900 students less in our enrollment, based on the demographer projections that we have in place, with a 90% projected ADA. So the idea there is anything higher is gonna be a bonus to us as we start to realize some of those efforts that we've been working on over the last couple of months. Under the federal revenue, as we've shared, the Shar's revenue was, which is associated with our special education services, we refer to them as personal care costs, that our nurses or paraprofessionals provide services to our students with high needs. The state, the federal government reimburses us. However, based on an audit they had this year, they are charging our states to reimburse significant amounts of millions of dollars back to the federal government. And of course, the state has turned back to our school districts and said, you owe us so that we can reimburse the district, the state. I'm sorry, the government. So that is a less, we're expecting or anticipating $2 million less in revenue there. A large infusion of our federal revenue was our indirect cost rates associated with ESSR. As we all know, ESSR is gonna expire September 30th, and because we are at the tail end, we are not anticipating additional revenue there as well. So if we move on, so you can see there the $12.9 million shortfall of revenue that we are anticipating from current year to next year. So now...
In essence, just for the public's, we're starting off with less money this school year in building the budget for 24, 25 than a year ago.
Yes.
By $12 million.
So when we move down to the next section or the bottom section of that same chart, the expenses, you can see there the breakdown in general amounts of our campuses and then our department costs. You can see we are infusing more revenue into the campuses' budgets with an increase of $9.3 million there. And so that is related to additional programming that we're working on to support the vision and the goals of Destination District redesign, of course. You know, programmatic GT expansion, aerospace, teachers at certain campuses, more infusion of interventionist, extending campus, days of campus teaching coaches. And next month, we'll give you the breakdown of all the new projects that we're proposing, but there's just more infusion into the academic experience of our students. So you can see that with that increase of $9.3 million. When you look at departments, you can see that I decreased department budgets by $10 million. And so the reason for that, of course, is to align our budgets to the revenue as close as we could, which you can see I did not achieve quite the goal that I tried, but we did reduce a significant amount out of our campuses, I mean, I'm sorry, our departments in the effort to just enhance the experience at the campus level. The next bottom graph is what you all are accustomed to seeing as a three-year forecast. So, yes.
Ms. Ayveda, before you go forward, in regards to this first budget, what you just proposed and all of those positions ahead, is it in here already?
No, compensation is not, is not...
All of these that were just presented?
She's talking about the stipends, yes.
Most of them are in.
Okay. Most of them are?
Yes. When I get to that slide, I can tell you. The G, I think it's the health and wellness stipend that's not infused there yet, and the GT program has not infused there.
And this was a question that I had had for you before we had started this morning, was how were we gonna be able to work out with the departments for that 10 million? They've already proposed what they plan to do then?
So, yes. So the budget team meets with every department leader, and this is a process of a couple of weeks long where they meet and evaluate all their proposals, have conversations. We have also identified, well, we can fund this with a local fund, but it's very much aligned with an entitlement fund. So we've collaborated and coordinated funds to meet as much as we can of the different department requests that were submitted.
Okay, thank you.
So when we look, and I wanted to also remind you all, when I came to you in March, we were anticipating a $16 million revenue shortfall at that time. We were, our expenses were not trimmed. In April last month, I brought you 14 million, and I'm now at the level of the 12 million that I sincerely, at this point, I don't know that I can cut anymore anywhere at this point. So the three-year forecast with that anticipated $12 million shortfall that we're expecting, you can see that bottom chart. So when you look at fiscal year '25, I am proposing that we utilize $12 million of one-time expenses through the use of fund balance. And so by doing that, that would require eight days of fund balance, of our existing fund balance. Please note, our fund balance right now is projected to end at 88 days' fund balance. So then the next two columns, fiscal year '26 and '27, give you, if nothing happened, if we didn't continue to align our operations and our district as a whole, then we would anticipate at least a $15 million shortfall for fiscal year '26 and a $25 million shortfall for fiscal year '27. So as those of you that have been with us over the last couple of years, I've shared the forecast with you all, but you also know that the district administration has been very focused on ensuring that our district's health is financially stable. And so what we're saying is if nothing happened, this is the anticipated effect. This is also with no additional state funding and continued loss of enrollment. So then we move on to the next slide, which is just the snapshot for your refresher of where our fund balance has been over the last couple of years. And so I'll share, the yellow graph is, I mean, the yellow bar is total fund balance. The gray bar is our total unassigned, which is the one we often refer to in the days of fund balance available. And then the navy blue is what is restricted. So earlier, I shared that we would pull 5 million or 4.6 million from our reserved fund balance on health, for healthcare. It would come out of that navy blue section. So it won't impact our days' fund balance. So when I go to the next page, I just want to reiterate the importance of, no, yeah. The importance of having a strong fund balance. And so, you know, without realizing what is occurring in our region with some of our districts, not having a strong fund balance is creating a larger challenge for them as they're trying to, you know, finalize their budgets. And so we are in a very good place at this point. And again, fund balance is important. We need to focus and utilize it when it's needed, but also being very mindful that we also need to re-infuse dollars year over year as we utilize it.
And I would just reiterate that fund balance is not money that we use for compensation, because any compensation increases that we incur as a school district are permanently baked into the budget. are permanently baked into the budget. And so fund balance is for one-time expenses. So by utilizing fund balance for those one-time expenses, we create bandwidth in the budget. But fund balance is for one-time expenses.
Yes. So when you see this chart, this is just to refresh your memory of what we saw in April when we did the forecast. And so you can see that we started the fiscal year '24 with 88 days of fund balance. And then you can see that we used fund balance, the board approved the use of fund balance when we adopted the budget, to the tune of 10.1 million back in July. Then we have infused a total of almost $9.3 million of sales of properties into our fund balance, which is what gets us to that 87 days as of right now. So when we go to the next page, it's going to show what that fund balance impact would be if we used the $12 million that I just referenced. So here you can see where, and I'm going to refer to the fund balance in days and hopefully that makes it easier to follow. So where our reported forecast to end this fiscal year is 87 days of fund balance. Because there are efforts that I'm going to share with you that administration is working on to infuse additional revenue or savings into fund balance, we're in the process of sweeping and taking into our fund balance levels two additional days of fund balance. We'll be utilizing 12 million, if the board approves, to finalize our budget. And then for the '24, '25 school year, we still have additional initiatives that will help us generate additional savings for our fund balance of five days. So if we utilize 12 million, we are ensuring that we're going to have to recapture savings to end the year with an 87-day fund balance by this time next year. So then if we move on to the next slide, there are some new initiatives. There are some expenses that we were not able to incorporate into the budget prior to getting the board's recommendation and approval. So we have new initiatives and I noted them there. The GT program expansion, Avid program implementation. Our student council will be hosting the conference next spring. And so that is a significant infusion of investment of dollars that we'll have to do to support our district being the EPISD host for the Texas Student Council Conference. We're also investing in custodial supplies and additional resources for our audit team to the tune of about $2.2 million. And then our capital replacement plan, as you all are aware, every year we do allocate dollars for that purpose. And so in transportation, we're allocating about $886,000. Our capital improvements of $3.2 million and our maintenance equipment and services of about $460,000, that's $4.6 million that's being asked of there. And then for police, we're increasing some FTEs in our police force and then our health and wellness stipends. That's a total of about $246,000. So that total is $7.1 million. So then you see that little yellow box that's referencing the 12 million that we talked about in the prior slide, plus these new additional allocations. That brings us to a use of fund balance of $19.2 million. To the left of that 19 million, you can see the number of fund balance days we would utilize, which is 12.97. You also see in this chart the impact if nothing changed in the future years. And so we would see a $23 million shortfall for '26 and a $32 million shortfall for '27. So then the next-
Really quick, something to note on that is in addition to the homestead exemption, which is the $40,000 to $100,000, there's also a cap on valuation increases that the Central appraisal district can have. And so you're kind of having compounding issues coming from this constitutional amendment, which again, is a constitutional amendment, so it's not changing.
Right.
Well, and it's, I just want to say it's a provision that impacts school districts and no other taxing entity.
Yes. So when you look at what is that impact in fund balance days, using the two initiatives, the savings that we're focused on recapturing right now and then next year's initiatives, utilizing or $19 million of fund balance would leave us at 82 days fund balance. And then-
So I would just share that the state recommends that we stay at 60 or above. I know that in my superintendent's evaluation, the board really prefers for us to be at 75 or above days worth of fund balance. So when we're building our budget, we work very diligently to make sure that if we're going to take from the fund balance, that we have strategic measures to put money back into the fund balance so that it's also at a health, always at a healthy number of days.
Yes.
I thought that number was 65, not 75, when we first started three years ago.
No. In my superintendent evaluation, it's 75 days.
So there's two numbers, just the state criteria of what you should have as a gold standard. And then in addition to that, in Ms. Ayvedra's, I think it's lever four, if I'm not mistaken, accountability, we say that if she wants to meet that standard, it's 75 days. So that's a district specific.
So this next slide is, kind of gives you an overview of the efforts that we in here, the administration will take to ensure that we continue to re-infuse dollars into the fund balance to end up with that 82 days mark that I just shared in, on page 46. So for this current year, the team has already initiated sweeps of general operating fund. I know departments have sent us requests for, please reconsider taking all my money. And so we are evaluating the different activities between now and June and then making a determination as to what we'll infuse, but still ensure that we recapture $1.9 million of revenue. Hiring freeze for central office vacant positions to the tune of $600,000 between now and June 30th. And then reclassification of salaries, teacher salaries from into ESER funds just through June 30th. So we're anticipating about $1.5 million of ESER funds that will not be utilized. And so that'll infuse the revenue back into fund balance. So, and then with fiscal year '24, '25, capturing $500,000 of the campus settlement dollars that we allocated for our, so we initiate campus budgets with 80% of their operating budget on July 1. When the snapshot comes in October, we do a reconciliation of your projected enrollment and did you realize that? And then through the assistance with our school leadership team, they evaluate expenditure levels of other funds prior to allocating any additional funds to these campuses. That usually takes place in January. This year, as you all know, we are, we retweaked the formula for campus allocations and incorporated the ADA percentage. So if we see gains in ADA percentages as of the third six-week period, we will allocate or infuse additional dollars in January. So we will have additional hiring freezes for central office positions from July through December to generate an additional $600,000 of savings. Keep in mind, there are positions that will be allowed because the savings could be greater, but we also wanted to try to be realistic that there are certain positions that we may not be able to do without. And then we are doing some reviews of departments to determine additional efficiencies and savings that can be generated there. And then lastly, I've tasked Mr. Pearson to sell more properties now. And so as a district, we're going to work to continue selling some properties. And so very conservative, we're saying $5 million of additional revenue based on that.
I'm going to let Ms. Aguirre jump to the end. So we do have a safety committee meeting with external partners at 11 o'clock, so being very mindful of that. I'm going to let you wrap this up and then we'll go to a speed round of 11:30. Oh, I missed, I was mistaken. Okay, we still have 30 minutes.
And I am at the, at the end of it. Do you want to open it up? What I did want to share is every year we've given you big bulky booklets of our department proposed budgets, organizational structures, and a lot of information so that it gives you a better understanding of what our departments are proposing and how they are comprised, as well as our campus allocations and budgets. And so Ms. DeLeon, our executive director of budget, will be giving you just kind of like a little bit of an understanding of how to navigate it because it'll be digital. We do have some paper copies, if that's better for you all, but we do have it in digital format for your review.
Good morning, everybody, or good afternoon. My name is Gloria DeLeon, executive director of the budget department. President Arabali, Sayamena. Board members, sorry, excuse me. And what I'm going to be sharing today is the 2024, 2025 proposed budget link. And so what you have here is you all have a link to it, or we do have paper copies there. The way to navigate through this book is you will click on this icon here to the right-hand side and it will give you the bookmarks. So under each bookmark here, you will have a section. And for example, you can click on administration section here. And you will show, we will show the division summary. So what the division summary will provide you is the data from 2024 and what's being proposed for 2025. Then you can go on to click any section within that division. For example, if you wanted to look at athletics. So what does our department presentation look like for athletics? So what you have here is an organizational chart followed by their goals. It'll highlight their current year highlights and what they're looking for in priorities and initiatives for 2025. Okay, then it is followed by their budget here. It is followed by their budget data here. Let me make this a little bit bigger.
It doesn't want to play.
Doesn't want to play.
And if you'd like us to kind of review it on a one-on-one basis, we can, we'll be glad to do that. So you can maneuver through that.
I think it's okay for them not to be able to see the line items, but just to understand what that section of the booklet, what information it'll offer them.
Right.
And so the next piece of the information is our proposed budget. And you can see the lines here towards the bottom. It'll have the elements of the accounts, the description, and the proposed FTEs and the proposed budget. So at the end of the presentation, you'll have a total here. At the bottom, you'll see the grand total in numbers of FTEs and the proposed budget for that department. So you'll have that link and that capacity to go ahead and click on any other division.
So we'll be sending that to Ms. Carrasco and then I'm sure she'll forward to you all as well.
So she will be sending you the link to access it?
Mm-hmm. And so lastly, the last page of our presentation is just an overview of our budget development process. We'll be seeing each other on June 4th again for the last budget workshop and then June 18th, the official, I apologize, June 20th is the correct date of the board meeting to adopt the budget and compensation package. And that's all I have.
Before we go to questions, we do have a speaker on this item, so I want to, Mr. Moore.
President Arabali, in the meantime, I just wanted to ask if-
We can just let him finish really quick, Isabel, then we'll jump into the discussion. Mr. Moore, you have three minutes.
Board President, Board President Arabali, board members, Ms. Ayvedra. My name is Ross Moore, president of El Paso AFT. I hope we all agree informed decisions are a good thing, that people should be enabled and supported in making informed decisions. So my next question is, in your particular professional field, if you were being told to sign a contract without knowing how much you're going to be paid and having an active labor market, is that an informed decision? But that's what your employees do every year, is make an uninformed decision. Term contracts went out last month, they're due back middle of this month. That's before the 4th or the 20th. So they're guessing on what it's going to be and they can't make a comparison. Do I want to stay here or look at a district that's paying better? And I understand jumping to some of these districts next door is jumping from the frying pan into the fire. This is not y'all's fault. It's not your fault, ma'am. This is Greg Abbott at his meanest. And bluntly, the '25, '26 budget years are going to look even, correction, '26, '27 are going to look even worse as he does, tries to do away with property taxes. So getting back to what I'm really asking, I understand there's three numbers out there, 0%, 1%, and 1.5%. So what I'm asking is whatever percentage you have, get it out there for the people so they can make an informed decision. Same thing with healthcare. Well, it's been said, everything has had a caveat on it. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Hernandez?
Maybe this is a question that, other than what was proposed here, when do we propose our suggested items?
No, we have 30. I was mistaken on the time, so.
We have 30 minutes.
Yep.
I really, I, and I don't know, and this is just coming in today wanting to make sure that we make the right decision for all of us here. I haven't shared it with President Arabali or anybody, but I would really like to see some type of compensation for, well, before I say that, I just wanted to say everybody in the administration here at central office and all of those support services are doing an excellent job. I would just want to say that I would like to see some increase for teachers. And I'm not talking about the staff or anybody else, but primarily teachers. Those that are directly in the trenches with the children every day, those that are directing those classrooms. That's where I would like to see more of our money or any money put. Thank you.
Just you and I.
So a couple of questions, just going back to our last budget workshop. I know that we had talked specifically about high demand or high need instructional positions. I think specifically we talked about speech pathologist. We talked about bilingual certification, bilingual certified teachers and sped teachers. Have those high-demand instructional positions been baked into this current budget workshop? Or are we anticipating talking about those at the next budget workshop?
We have been in discussion with academics regarding special education and any type of SLPs and other positions in that area, so we'll have more information.
And, thank you. And when we get that, can we kind of get a breakdown of where we're having a hard time recruiting for positions? I know that was something that was brought up in the last budget workshop as well. And then the other thing that was brought up in the last budget workshop that you all may still be working on is the superintendent evaluation related to the equity-based funding model and how some of those funds could be earmarked to work in tandem with the equity audit as opposed to following the equity audit. Is that something that we'll also be talking about?
Yes. So, so the plan would be that in June, we will give you an overview of the allocations by strategic lever. And within that, we have evaluated some of the way we allocate some of our campus supports based on the needs that each campus has, but we can give you more. It's not all-inclusive because as you are aware, we have not started that equity audit. But we, in my, being mindful of the needs, we are, we're being a little more deliberate into how we allocate.
So what I would share is clarification. We have- We have started our equity audit, so I think that's important for us to note. I know that it's gonna be, it's gonna be an extensive audit that's gonna take us some time. I know that what our plan is, is that as we're, as the audit is generating information, we'll have opportunities to strategize and determine, you know, how that might impact us. I know that ahead of any findings from the equity audit, we've already begun to look at specific needs and are working with particular campuses and providing additional staffing units to those campuses to address, you know, instructional needs that we've seen and areas like, I'm gonna give you an example, Jefferson High School will receive additional staffing units, Bowie High School, I think, is another one, where, and we would identify students, let's say in the area of Algebra I. And rather than those kids being scheduled for every other day, Algebra, they would be scheduled for Algebra I every day, which would require additional staffing units for us to be able to build a master schedule like that. So those are some of the equity adjustments that we're making in the immediate. I'm not gonna tell you that they're extensive and they're gonna meet, you know, what, you know, or, or that will preempt any findings in the equity audit. I'm sure that the equity audit will reveal more that we can do, but we know in the immediate, those are some things that are, that are apparent.
And that's very, very helpful. I appreciate that. I think it'd be great to have that transparency included, you know, as part of our presentations to the public. The other thing to think about is because we are now in contract with MAC, there could be a possibility to ask them, what are some of the high-level funding opportunities that we could earmark money for? Just so that, you know, we're, we're really working to ensure that we're not waiting another year for those kids to get the services that they need or the budget adjustments that they need. And then, so perfect, those are those two. And then the last question I had is really in regards to, I know you mentioned here sale of property on one of the pages. One of the things that we've kind of been talking about and, and as we look to, you know, what the limitations of the legislature and the government, the state government, is how we could possibly explore revenue generating opportunities with our existing land or properties. I would really like to see us be proactive and instead of just, you know, sell, 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 is possibly exploring what types of revenue generating opportunities exist, you know, whether it's school districts that are already doing something innovative. Kind of the messaging that is sort of out there is that if you're not exploring innovative opportunities for revenue generation, you're kind of behind the eight ball just because of the forecast that we're seeing and the continued constraints. So I would really like us to see a little bit more of that as we're just looking to the future rather than just, and I, and I, you know, appreciate where there are opportunities to sell properties that obviously we don't anticipating seeing any other use for. But I just want to make sure that we're not overlooking that, that part because I think in the future, that could be the difference between a school district that's self-sustaining and a school district that is just gonna, you know, fall through the cracks with the budget.
I will share one, and this is not associated with properties, but it is a revenue generating source that we've pushed out. Now, we're not, we haven't built it enough for it to be, to generate revenue in the immediate, but over time, so our extended day, the work that we're doing with extended day, you all adopted tuition rates, or we'll be, we'll be bringing you tuition rates to adopt. So that will be revenue generating in self-sustaining, but then revenue generating, there's a potential to, to, if we do it well, to generate, you know, at least a million dollars above and beyond what. But that'll take us some time to get there, but that is the plan for that particular program.
And that's excellent. I mean, I think that as we kind of build up our community schools, community programs from, from cradle to college is really an excellent way to sort of see those efforts. So that is amazing and I appreciate that. I mean, I do think just to that point, we need to really see ourselves as a forever district rather than then really just trying to make ends meet in the short term. And so if we continue to have those conversations and take that outlook, you know, from crib to cradle and, I mean, from cradle to college and beyond, I think we'll be in a good place long-term. Thank you for everything, you all.
Your question?
Just to call.
Yeah, on the new initiatives and capital replacement plan, we're gonna go into this a lot more detail next budget meeting, right? Okay. We just kind of skimmed over it and I, before I could get behind that, I knew a lot more information. All right, great, thank you.
And, and as always, I'm absolutely open to meeting with each one of you individually to talk through more specifically any questions that you all might have. So I always make myself available in my one-on-ones with you all, or we can schedule a special meeting for, for me to meet with you individually with executive team members to, to share more specific information about questions that you might have about program expansions or anything of that nature.
And then I know there's another question. So last thing I, I just want to say is, as we look at slide 45, which really breaks down the investments in, to what Daniel said, the additional proposals that he doesn't have enough information on, you know, I just want to tie it to what our overall strategy is with Destination District redesign. I've been to the last two meetings, I guess the first two meetings, which another one will be tonight at El Paso High. I encourage the trustees to attend because it really gives us a chance where, I'm sure as you guys have seen the media reports, it looks like it's just school closures, right? Consolescence in school closures. And one thing that I admire is Ms. Ayvedra has constantly said, it's about programming, it's about facilities, and it's about, you know, rightsizing and having those conversations in tandem. And as we see here, we understand that there's opportunities for program improvements and, and this is it being realized right here. It's not just about cutting the district to the bone and we can only survive for the next, you know, couple of years. It's looking at how we expand and grow. So thank you for this. I think as, as Mr. Call said, we'll get more information on it, we can make an informed decision. And then the last thing is, I just want to be very cognizant as we go through this for myself, as we look at pay increases, I really do want to think of the district as a whole. You know, we, we did go to the Teacher of the Year, Support Personnel of the Year awards on Friday night. And there, we not only saw, you know, the teachers that are in the classroom, but we saw everyone else that helps make these campuses and academic institutions a success, right? Getting a student from their house where they maybe not have transportation to some kind of programming that they maybe don't have access to because of that lack, that's an amazing thing to make sure a kid doesn't go home hungry because we offer those additional services at the end of the day to, you know, our high schools. Again, another amazing thing that we do. So looking at our employees as a whole, I think is, is at least my perspective of how I would like to proceed, especially as we have limited dollars. And I know that's something that we'll have a conversation with as we go into our June meeting before we do the approval, but just thank you again, this is a really good presentation. And with that, we're gonna close early at 11:14. Thank you.